Good morning, everybody. I'm calling this session of the Sherburne zoning board of appeals to order. Purpose of the meeting today is to consider a notice of product project change submitted by Whitney Farm LLC under the existing comprehensive permit for Whitney Farm Development. Applicant is proposing to introduce a new architectural style, a novel colonial design that was not included in the original approved plans. Board's role this morning is to determine whether this proposed change is consistent with the terms of the comprehensive permit, the findings in our original decision and the applicable design standards under chapter forty B. A central issue for us is whether the proposed architectural deviation materially alters the approved design scheme, particularly as it relates to the requirement under state guidelines that affordable units be visually indistinguishable from market rate units. We will be examining, examining whether the introduction of this new home style is harmonious with the previously approved development and whether it risks creating a visual or architectural differentiation that could affect the integration of the affordable housing component. Our review this morning will focus on the record, the legal standards that govern the notices of project change under seven sixty CMR fifty six oh five, and whether the proposed change is substantial. We will proceed by hearing from the applicant, followed by questions from the board, and then the public comment as appropriate. I want to emphasize that the board is obligated to ensure that any improved design changes remain consistent with the findings and conditions of the original comprehensive permit, that any modification must not undermine the principles of design integration and affordability underlying chapter forty B. Okay, so I'd like to start asking the applicant to present the proposed change.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and board members. For the record, Peter Freeman, attorney representing the applicant. And for the applicant, we also have Ted Moore here and Trevor Moore. So I'll give a brief introduction and then further description by Trevor, and we can address the items that you just mentioned. So under the forty B regulations, they have a characterization of changes that are either substantial or insubstantial, and typically, under the guidelines, if there are no increases in the number of units, no increases in the number of bedrooms, and actually even increases of ten percent or less are still deemed to be insubstantial. So the types of changes that we have do not basically trigger those types of changes or increases. As my notice of project change dated October eighth said, what this all comes down to are five things, and then we had a more detailed chart that showed exactly the comparison of what we had approved and what we're proposing now. But number one, we're proposing to increase the duplex buildings from seven buildings, ten buildings. Number two, reduce the single family buildings from thirty-four to twenty-eight buildings. Number three, reduce the total number of bedrooms from one hundred and eighty-six to one hundred and eighty. Number four, reduce the C-type building from eight building, from eight units to one. And finally, number five, increase the G building type from twelve units to twenty-two units. So we believe that under the regulations, those are all insubstantial changes. And as to the change in the proposed new architectural style, we believe that they are indeed completely harmonious. They're changes, but they're not completely different styles of buildings. We believe they certainly fit in, and I can have Ted elaborate or Trevor elaborate if you would like. As to the question of distinguishability of the affordable units, we don't believe that these changes would in any way offend that basic standard, which is indeed the standard. You don't want units to be distinguishable. One part of it is spreading out the affordable units. The layout on the site plan still has the units, the affordable units spread out. And if you'd like, Trevor can show on the site plan of the existing of the existing duplexes built. There are four affordable units in duplexes, but there's also, there are also eight market units in duplexes. The farmhouse, which has the appearance of a single-family house, has, has or will have two duplexes. But again, it's really indistinguishable from driving on the street or walking around. You're not going to see this as a smaller building and say, oh, they're the affordable units. And that's also true in terms of comparing some of the market size units, like four D is the same size as the affordable units next door on lots six and seven. So those are the, I think, most salient details in addressing that concern that was stated by the chairman in that introduction. So I will stop there and then turn it over to Trevor to basically just briefly go through the comparative site plan, I think might be the most useful. So Trevor, can you screen share or Jeannie, do you want to do it?
I can certainly try.
Peter, I should, I should probably, since, since I don't think the, I'm, this is Ted. I'm not sure. I'm not sure the board is aware necessarily of the full background, but this, this development was initially approved twenty-one years ago in two thousand and four as a, as a single family, not single family, excuse me, as a standard subdivision project and, and when, and actually there were, there were very, there were sketch architectural plans that, that you couldn't build. I mean, they were, they were simply, oh, here's a concept. There were no, no plans as you could build anything from. I didn't get involved in the project till two thousand and twelve, at which time we, we brought in a very substantial architect who did, done a lot of, a lot of designs. Basically, a lot of New England, New England, you know, see a lot of, a lot of New England type style designs that are typically, you know, pitch roof, one story in the front. And that's what, if anybody's, if you've been out to Whitney Farms, you've seen the architecture that's out there. We were, we were required to keep and we, and renovate the farmhouse, which we did, you know, it was a gut, it was basically a gut rehab and the result is quite an attractive building right now. But we, in two thousand and twelve, we were able to change the designation from the subdivision to condominiums. And that's the, the original architectural plans approved in two thousand and four went by, you know, I would say went by the wayside and were replaced with several different proposed designs from Gazado Veleco architects. And that's what, that's what the board saw in two thousand and twelve when we, when we switched from a standard subdivision to a condominium. And that's basically the, that's basically the housing styles that you see on the site right now. Maybe I should pause there for a minute and say, as far as architectural design, is everyone, has everyone on the board, has, has everyone on the board been to Whitney Farm and seen what the units look like?
No. Just driven by many.
Well, I mean, you've driven by, you've seen the units?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah. I mean, I, I think they're quite attractive, and I think, and I think we've done a good, you know, much better job with the architecture than was originally planned. We originally set forth in two thousand and four when the standard, you know, the standards for architectural design for our forty B were simply, you know, give us some sketches as to what you think things might look like. And we, we went a lot further than that in two thousand and twelve when we, we ended up, we made up some A B. We typically said A, B, C, D styled, and we just labeled some buildings. A was Amherst, B was Bentley, C was Cornell, D was, I forget, we picked some colleges and that's what we got. I'm not sure what G was. G must have been Georgetown, but we picked a number of, we picked some names to go along with the styles. The, the, the building that we're, one of the buildings that you're, that Jonathan talked about today is basically a building that would go next to the farmhouse. There's always been a building there, but the design of the proposed building actually looks like, more like a farmhouse, both as color and material than, than, than the other units. The other units are somewhat different than the farmhouse. The farmhouse is white with black windows, and it has a long side to the street and the building next door, the building forty-eight that has been proposed is going to be white with black windows that have a long side to the street. So it'll, it'll fit quite well with the farmhouse, which is unit forty-six and forty-seven.
Thanks, Ted. So I think Trevor first pull up the comparative plan, and as you will see, folks, it's really just adjustments. There's very little change in where the footprints are. And then secondly, which I hadn't mentioned to you earlier, Trevor, but perhaps after that, you should go right to pulling up the elevations of the F plan building and the G plan building, just to get into the architectural. Trevor, I don't know.
Yes.
Does the board, looking at this, looking at this overlay, does the board have any questions, specific questions? I mean, I look at this and I, I think you can see that the new, you know, that, that the proposed buildings are essentially in the same locations as what was previously approved.
Okay, well, is Trevor going to walk us through what this plan shows?
I can give you some brief background and I can let Ted answer any, any specifics, but essentially what you're looking at is that the, the filled-in rectangles here are the currently constructed buildings. The sort of blank outlines are the planned buildings on the reflecting of the new plan of two thousand and twenty-five. And the sort of ghostly outlines that you see are the, are the original proposed plans.
No, they're the two thousand and nineteen proposed plan, the approved plan.
Sure, sure. Yes. Thank you. So if you have any, any requests for zooming in anywhere in particular, I'm happy to accommodate.
So if I could just say it back to you, the shaded in regions in the gray are the existing structures today. The light gray outline of footprint are the originally approved forty B plans from two thousand and nineteen.
Yes.
And the dark black outlined units that overlay the light gray are the new proposed placement and/or design location that you're seeking approval of or reviewing with us today.
Yes.
And, and what about the tan or taupe shading, the forty-six, forty-seven EE? Could you walk us through that part as well?
That's the original farmhouse that was mentioned. Oh, sorry. Ted, go ahead.
No, that's right. That's, that's the farmhouse. That is the farmhouse that has been there for a hundred and twenty years. I'm not sure why it's not gray, but it's because it's, it was never, it was never new construction on the outside. It was always, you know, re, the little, the little, the little rectangle you see next to it is actually a three, that's actually a three-car garage, and that was built new so that there'd be a garage space for people living in forty-six and forty-seven.
Okay, those, those exist.
Yes.
Okay, just orienting myself to the page.
Yep, yeah.
And for, for example, forty-two C, where I only see the light shading and there's no dark, dark shading of a, of an outline above it, that, that structure is no longer going to be built? That's been removed?
Yeah, that's correct. Yeah. Now, if that structure were built, there'd be forty-nine units, which is too many. So there's also a, if you had a topo there, the, the side near the straight line you'll see, which is Ashland, is, is not, it's, it's, would take, it would take some, you'd be digging into the slope, the slope of an Neta road, and so.
Yeah, yeah, not conducive for construction. Okay, I understand.
So I think then, Trevor, if you can pull up F and G elevations.
Sure. So here is F. Are you able to see this?
I still see the original screen that you shared.
Yeah, still the site plan.
Give me a moment, please. Okay. So here is the F-type. Is that visible to everyone?
Yes, can see the elevations.
Great. And give me one moment and I will have to find the G-type.
And my, my comment on this, these, you know, these, this elevation is also from Gazado Veleco, the architect that did, that, that did the plans for all of the gray filled-in units on the previous plan we had up here. And the basic idea is the units on the street, they're, they're typically once, you know, typically one story. And then we, and then they, you know, there's a roof, there's an eight and twelve roof line, very New England-y that goes up. And then there's space living inside the roof on the second floor. The big difference, the big difference between the F-type and the G-type is really the F-type is long side, the longer dimension. If you think about the, the, the building as a rectangle, the building footprint is a rectangle. Every unit that's been built so far has been the narrower side facing the street. And except for the farmhouse, which wasn't built, but the F-type is where we have a shallower lot in depth and a wider, wider lot area in width. And so the F-types are turned ninety degrees so that the longer, the, the side of the rectangle with the longer dimension is facing the street. And there's only, there's only a couple, there's only a couple, three locations on the site at eight, thirteen, and twenty-one where the geometry of the street and the houses allow for or encourage that type of a design.
Okay, so you, you're, you're proposing to build three of, of this style?
Yes, and lot eight, thirteen, and twenty-one.
And of those, how many are affordable?
I'm lying to you. Four of them.
Lies is a strong word.
There's four, there's four.
Four, okay.
There's also building thirty-eight, so thirty, thir, uh, eight, thirteen, twenty-one, and thirty-eight.
Okay.
And there's, there's no, no affordables of this type because this, this is a thirty-two-hundred square foot unit, and I think our, I think our affordables are minimum of thirteen-hundred square feet. So there's, it's, it's not possible economically to build a, you know, to build a eight-hundred-thousand-dollar building that you're going to sell for two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars.
Yeah, no, no, I, I understand. I'm just trying to understand what the mix is going to be. And we're, we're really not concerned about what gets finished inside, of course, provided that your bedroom count is in compliance with your original permit. I'm, I'm just looking to understand how distinguishable these market rate homes are to the affordable units within the community. And it sounds like these would be exclusively market rate.
Yes, yeah, the good, the interesting, I think it's a great question that you raised, and what I would say to you is the, the fact that we've put building six and seven, which are affordable, they're do, put them together as a duplex, makes the, the mass of the building actually greater than all but one, two, three, four, all but four of the, of the built structures that have, or the buildings that have been built to date. The massing of the, by taking the two affordables and putting together, you get about a three thousand, you get almost a three-thousand-foot footprint. What's that, you know, that, yeah, footprint plus the second floor, which makes the, makes that do, affordable duplex actually massing-wise and value, you know, heft-wise, larger, you know, somewhat larger than one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, than twelve of the existing single-family structures.
Do you happen to have an elevation of the largest duplex on site by mass that would be comparable to this, but by mass, right?
Do we have, Trevor, do we have building twelve, eleven and twelve here?
Give me a moment. I'm seeing if I can get into the GVA server and I, I will try to pull that up.
Okay, the building actually exists. I mean, it's been, it's been there for seven years.
Yeah, I just, I just don't have it in front of me, right?
I understand, I understand.
No, that's, that's, that's a good thing to ask, and we, we didn't send it, send it in when I emailed the request.
Okay, well, well, while Trevor's looking at that up, so this is the F-type. There's also a G-type, correct, if I'm following along correctly for?
Except I misspoke. The new type is, is K, is a K-type plan.
K-type, okay.
Yeah. The, the, the G-type, turns out that we, turns out the Whitney Farm got off to a bit of a slow start. We built a an A, a C, and a G, and we had six people show up wanting to buy the G, wanting to buy a G. And nobody wanted to buy a C, and it took a year or two to have somebody buy the A. We finally sold the C after three years of sitting there, beautiful, finished and empty. Nobody wanted a house that big. And, but the G turned out to be the popular, the popular, you know, the voter, the, the buyer's vote was for Gs, so we ended up building one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, we built fourteen, we had built and sold fourteen Gs, or built, we, we finished, finished and sold twelve of them, and there's two more that are nearing finish.
Okay, okay. Well, the market's.
The G is a variety. It has a three-bedroom variety and a four-bedroom variety. The number of bedrooms that we will end up here on the plan is actually less than we're permitted. We were permitted one hundred and eighty-six, and it looks like we'll only end up with one hundred and eighty.
Yeah, I heard that at the opening. Yep, very good.
But nobody liked our C. I was, I went to Cornell. That was our Cornell building. Nobody, nobody wanted to buy it, so we made it, we should have stuck with Georgetown, I guess.
Ted, I'd like to modify our request to have a Y-type. Sorry, just joking. Uh, is that a Yale-type?
Yeah, Peter must have gone, Peter went to Yale.
Yeah, must be a Yale guy, yeah.
Couldn't resist, sorry. Trevor, any luck?
Uh, I have found the K-type, but I'm still working on the duplex question for building.
Yeah, well, what you'd like, what you'd want to try to find, if you can, is, is on Gazado Veleco is build a lot six and seven. Because that, you know, six and seven is the duplex, it's the townhouse duplex that we have there that's slightly larger than the G-type.
Right.
Maybe while you're walking through that or, or looking for that, perhaps you could provide a little bit more color here in terms of, from an architect's perspective or a an architect's perspective, what efforts were made here for these, you know, sizable single-family homes to visually blend with a, with some, some duplexes in the community, right? I'm seeing, looks like you have two front doors in a more traditional style. Garages are offset to the side, so it, it clearly looks like a single-family home. It doesn't look like a duplex structure to me.
You're talking about the one that's we're looking at right here, the type F?
Yeah, I'm just looking at the one here.
Yeah, yeah, the type F, the type F is a single, if you look, if you looked on your, if you, I know you don't have, I don't think you have in front of you the, the site plan layout, or do you?
Uh, I can bring that back up one second.
Compare what you see here with the F to twenty-five and twenty-six, which is a duplex made up of an N, which is a, which is a narrow G, a G. The the width of the house, the, those two houses together are seventy-two feet wide. And the the plan we've been looking at with the F is approximately that wide, only it's, it's, as I said, the long side of the house, the long dimension is facing the street. And it's, it's somewhere between, I, I'm, we could look at the plan, there's a dimension on it, but it's, it's somewhere in the seventy, seventy-foot width range, and that's similar, looking at this plan here, it's similar and it's similar in range to thirty-one and thirty-two and twenty-five and twenty-six, which are both duplexes. And again, looking at this plan, if you look at the box which says forty-eight K, that, you can see that box is very similar in size to the thirty-one and thirty-two G box. As far as what's, as far as what's facing the street, the long side facing the street, and, and the thirty-one and thirty-two, it would be, it's, it's two narrow sides facing the street, but taken together as a massing, it's, it's seventy to seventy-five feet facing the street.
Uh, looks like I was able to locate the elevations for six and seven, if we want to take a look at those.
Right.
Yes, please.
Um, okay.
Remind you, this, this gentleman who's doing this for us is a liberal arts grad, not an architect, so he's doing a great job. Thank you, Trevor.
No problem. Okay.
Where he got these skills, I don't know, but.
Largely self-taught, actually. So here you're seeing the south and east elevations of buildings six and seven.
And how many such buildings are there and what number of those are affordable?
Yeah, there would be, there are, there are four, there are four affordable units constructed now, and we, we will eventually need to construct eight more, and we would, we would plant, we would propose putting two, two units in each of four buildings, and you're looking, you're looking at the building design there, which, which again is about the, you go to, go to the front elevation, Trevor, please.
Um, can I do both? Uh, okay, front elevation.
Okay, there you go. So that's, that, I don't see, for some reason, I don't, you, you you can see that's again a one-story start-off point, and then their gable ends on the, on what you see in the background that's white is actually the ridge of the building. And then the, these gable ends in the front, similar to what we have all of our other, every other building there.
So
this, and this, this building is approximately fifty feet wide, so it's wider than the Gs are twenty, excuse me, thirty-eight feet wide. This building is forty-eight feet wide, so it's, it's more, it's larger than, the massing is larger than a single G and narrower than a, than a G duplex.
So one of the standards that governs this process is that chapter forty B explicitly states that affordable units must be indistinguishable from market rate units in exterior appearance. So could you address that particular point because it, it appears to me just on first blush that there's a, that you can distinguish between the.
I think, I think, I think it's, it's impossible to.
Let, let me say something first, because indistinguishable doesn't mean that every single unit in the complex has to be exactly the same. I think the most salient point, as we pointed out, is that there are also a whole bunch of market rate duplex units. So on the entire complex, there are a combination of styles, as you have seen and as has been built. And interspersed are affordables and markets that are in the duplex buildings. So indistinguishable essentially somewhat simplified means. somewhat simplified means if you're walking by or driving by, are you going to be able to without any background information, without having looked at advertising information or anything like that, are you going to be able to pick out an affordable unit? And you really can't. Um, and the other factors are what I think I said and Ted said earlier. Uh, the sizes um mass-wise and and footprint-wise when you walk by are similar to the uh the single-family buildings. So there's always a mix of styles and a mix of sizes, but the overall criteria on that standard of indistinguishability is not complete uniformity. It's rather what I just said, as you walk by, you're you're going to be able to pick out affordable units. And and we, you know, respectfully say you re- you really can't.
Well, it would appear that that you will be able to pick out the market rate units that are proposed.
I I I would agree with you, Jonathan. You know, the the I and we're not nitpicking the the architecture. You know, I think the architecture, you know, complies. It looks like everything's been very nicely designed, but clearly looking at those elevations for the um, uh, it was the F type, right? For the for the new, the new single-family market rate homes. Um, it, to me, it's very obvious from the street that those um are unique and different. And the fact that there will be no um affordable units of that structure and aesthetic, to me, it becomes quite clear that they are in fact distinguishable on an exclusive basis.
So my my question there, sorry to jump in, is the, yeah, the F units are different than the G units. So you've got two different types of units. You can't, you you can't determine from looking at those two, you know, related, you know, cousins, but different units. You you can't tell whether one is affordable or what is market. They're different. There's a, there's a mix of units there. In fact, unit 4D is actually an affordable, but it's it's in a building next to a a market unit. So so we have, we have we have a market unit that's the same, the same size and essentially the same size and shape as the affordables, but it's market.
It, yeah, the my 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 point is not with regards to what's already been built. I think that's been done very nicely and I would, I would agree with you that there it's difficult to distinguish. This F type, however, is a novel design. Uh, it's clearly a single family based on its structure. Um, and because there would be no affordable unit with that shape, then with that design, then it's it's obvious and and easy to distinguish that those are not affordable units.
Yeah, what I would say to that is the focus is just on that unit standing alone. But if you look at the whole site, I think what Ted said still is legitimately the overall case and impression.
You you disappeared, Peter.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Sorry.
So the other, the other thing I, the the other thing sort of
Well, Ted, what I, what, if you didn't hear me, I don't know if the others heard.
Oh, go ahead, Peter.
If you look in isolation at uh the new style uh being only market and it looks different, which it does, but it also is the same character and attractive style in New England and all of that, which is another important factor. Um, but you can't look at it just focusing on the new alone. Again, if you look at the entire site and walk around, you're not going to really be able to distinguish. So, you know, I don't think that the fact that we're not proposing an affordable unit uh in that new F type or K type. It, again, if you look, if you only look at that part of the project, yes, there aren't any affordable units. But again, if you look at the entire site, there are a variety of architectural styles and the affordable units, even though they're in the duplexes, are spread all around the site. So I do think that basically, again, the way I interpret and understand the purpose of the indistinguishability guideline, um, that we satisfy it.
Okay, well, Todd, do you have any other questions?
Uh, I do not.
Okay, so uh Heidi Doyle, you have your hand up?
Yes, thank you. Hi, Heidi, Heidi Doyle, Town Planner. I had a couple of questions. So it looks like there are no single-family affordable homes that will be in the complex. And then you made a comment that there are eight duplexes coming, of which eight affordable homes still need to be built. And you, are you going to put then affordable homes in four of them? Like, you're going to put the two affordable homes next to each other in the duplexes, or are they going to be one in each?
We're we're going to put them next to each other, just like we did in six and seven, in order to get the massing, get the building, get the massing of the buildings similar. If you
Well, you're building
I'm just going to say, if if we have, if if an affordable unit is 1,400 square feet, there's no way that it's going to look like there's no way it can look like the 3,000 square foot market units that exist. It's just you can't, you can't make a 1,400-foot building look like a 3,000-foot building unless you mo- match it up with something like we did in six and seven and we're proposing to do an 11 and 12. That that, at that point, you get building massing being all related, you know, all related and similar as opposed to this, this, you know, for, you know, this little you know, little 1,400 square foot unit. It will, if you try to make it a single, it will definitely stand out from everything else because it'll be so so small.
Right, but did you say you're doing eight more duplex buildings?
No, no, four, four more.
Okay, okay. I thought you said eight and I guess.
No, 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 four, four, four buildings, eight units.
Okay, so out of those, half of those are going to be affordables, but the affordables are not going to be scattered within those four. They're going to be next to each other.
No, they're going to be, there's one at the very end of Colonel Isaac. There's one at the very end of Adams. There's one on Millstone. They're spread throughout the site.
Yeah. The the new buildings?
Yes.
Yeah, that, and that's why I keep saying that being spread out is a very important factor because
Okay.
I think I would agree if they're concentrated in one section, that that is likely an issue, but these are all spread out.
Right, I thought you were saying the duplex, both parts of the duplexes were going to be affordables. And that's what I was trying to find out if one will be an affordable and one will be market rate in these duplexes.
The plan is to take two, two 1,400 square foot affordables, put them together so you have a 2,800 square foot mass building to go along with the Ns and the Gs and the As that are between 2,600 and 3,500, you know, 30, if they have a finished basement, 3,200 square feet.
Okay, but the affordables are going to be together.
Yes.
Yeah, 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 there will be four.
They're going to be together, so they're not distinguishable. If we put them set by themselves, you know, we you know, you think about, I mean, I don't want you
Yeah, that's
Bringing a double wide in on a trailer and setting it on a foundation. Now you got a 1,400 square foot house.
All right, well, this is for the, thank you.
Yeah, and they are spread out. Just one other thing, which I, you know, I don't I didn't intend to, and I don't want to get legalistic, but, you know, Mass Housing is a subsidizing agency and they approved um, the styles and the affordable locations in the past. Um, we don't think they would have any problem with this now. Um, we'd much rather, you know, have you folks basically come to a comfort level with what we're proposing. Um, but since this project started, you know, there is new case law where uh, the affordability and the location of affordable units is essentially up to the subsidizing agency. So you know, we still stand by the explanations and justification that we've given and and we certainly want to satisfy you. Uh, but just wanted to point that out because the standard in a way has changed in that the subsidizing subsidizing agency, you know, needs to be satisfied. And we're happy to talk to them if you want.
Okay, well. I'm gonna, I've got a comment here from Olga Monikov. And I guess I'll read her comment and ask the applicant to respond to it. She describes herself as a resident near the historic Whitney Farm property. I would like to express my concern about the proposed amendment that would remove the mature trees and change the open area in front of the historic home. These trees and the natural landscape are an essential part of the property and of our town's heritage. Those very trees are often displayed in pictures and representations of Sherburne. Replacing them with new construction would permanently alter the visual integrity of this historic site. I respectfully ask the board to keep one of the previous versions of the plan that preserves the trees and open space around the historic house, maintaining the authentic spirit of Sherburne. Thank you for your attention and for caring about our shared history. Okay. Well, Mr. Moore.
Yeah, the 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 2019 approved plan has a house going where those trees are, where they're talking about. Two of those trees have died. Uh, there were three, there were three of them. Two of, two of them have died. You know, either because of old age or because of the or because of the, you know, could it could be because of the road work going, you know, the road work going, the road and utility work that's gone on to to build what's there now. The um
But Mr. Moore, just so we're clear, you know, we're we're taking, we're taking this visualization that's being shown to us here at face value this morning for our discussion. Um, it, the the revised plans that you're proposing, um, I'm not correct me if I'm wrong, I'm not seeing a proposed structure being placed in a previously designated open space. Is that a fair statement?
Correct. Yeah, if you look, if you look at this plan, the plan that's on the screen here, you can, if you look at 48, you can see the faint, you can see the faint lines, the faint gray lines in almost exactly
Yep.
the same location as the, that that faint gray line is, that's on the, that's on the approved 2019 plan. So we're not, we're not changing, you know, we're not going from not having a structure there to having a structure. We're going from having a structure to having a slightly different structure.
Mm hmm.
And and the true, the, something that I don't think anybody, I mean, I don't think I I'm not sure anybody at this point other than maybe Jeannie is aware of, uh one of the, one of the, one of the, uh, one of the things about Whitney Farm, what's, you know, it was a dairy farm and it had a, you know, it was, there was almost no elevation change. It's basically a flat hunk of land. And um, and the water table was only four, four or five feet. The uh, the the perch, you know, the existing water table was only four or five feet below the surface of of the farmland. So, so for the first year that after the condominium plan was approved, uh, we did two things. We brought in uh, a large amount of gravel fill from Southborough. We had, we had 18 whalers going for a year. Uh, and we raised the land. We raised all the land and roadways at Whitney Farm by about five feet. Included in that was trade, we we had a lot of loom there, which wasn't, you know, not something you want to build a house on. We ended up uh, taking some loom up the hill to Faffards. We'd take a truck up, they would get loom and they would send back down stone and gravel to Whitney Farm. So the result is these houses are now the basements of these houses, rather than being eight feet deep and against a five-foot water table, although now eight feet deep against a 10-foot water table. So there's the result being no, no ba-, you know, the 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 result being dry basements. So I I also think that raising, you know, I'm I'm, as I understand trees, if you, if you put three feet of fill next to a tree, uh, the the tree is probably going to die. Or, you know, it takes, it takes it doesn't die the next day, but it dies over the course of a a number of years. And that's, I think, was what, I think that's what's happened to a couple, the two of the trees that are in the location on building 48.
And with all of that, I
More, more importantly, there's all, there's already a permit, there's already a approved plan for a house there.
Nope, no, I was just looking for clarification.
Yeah, no, I understand. Sure. I mean, nobody knew that we, that Whitney Farm is four feet higher than it than it was when we started. Yeah, four, four feet and a million dollars higher than when we started.
So respecting the resident's letter, but, and I don't have it in front of me, but I don't really think, you know, what she expresses is actually what's happening. So um, obviously, that's important.
Are there any other members of the public who have a question for the applicant? Okay.
Jeannie has her hand up.
I have a quick question. Did you share the elevations for the uh new K unit?
No, we didn't bring that up just now.
Okay.
Trevor, if you want to do that, that would be good.
Uh, is that working for people?
We can see the K unit plan, yes.
Um, this the duplex?
Same, no, single family.
Okay.
About the same size as the G units in total, same, you know, square footage, that is, same area. Obviously, the architect, the different architect and the shading, you know, red, the shading is different. Um, I don't know why it's gray rather than white, but that's what I see.
And my memory may be wrong, but the gables on the front facade are similar to what one sees on the duplexes.
Yeah, and the, and the basically the roof line starts at the top of the first floor and gets, and it's a gable end.
And and how many of these units are you proposing?
Two.
And how many of those units are affordable?
Zero. Yeah, I I can't make a 3,500 square foot affordable unit affordable.
I I'm not, I'm not saying you can.
No, I know.
I I appreciate the discussion, you know, the 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 questions are logical. Um, you know, economics, unfortunately, with these things with the, you know, cost increases and all that, they they are a factor in the decisions as well as adjusting to the market, um, as Ted explained at the outset. Um, and, you know, the other thing is, which is making a pitch for affordability, but you know, it's been a long time and they would really like to be able to continue and build this thing out, which is, you know, why we came here, obviously. Um, so, you know, we, again, we stand by what we said. Um, if you feel as though you might need to be a little flexible to allow it, we would, you know, we would respectfully say the overall impact, as I keep saying, is still um consistent with what 40B is supposed to be. Uh, so I just wanted to, you know, to mention that. But I think style-wise, again, in terms of indistinguishability, you know, that characteristic with the two, with the two gables on the front, um, is reminiscent of the duplex building.
Yeah, I I think architectural style and indistinguishability are two separate concepts. So I would, I would sort of disagree from my perspective on that. But just, just so I'm I'm keeping track here. So we have four F units or F types um that are being proposed, which are all single-family homes, all market rate, and two K units being proposed. All single-family homes, all market rate, for a total of six new single-family homes, all market rate, being proposed.
When you, when you say new, th- those, those units, the units you're talking about, we're all the single-family homes. All we're, all we're doing is changing, we're changing from let's say a G to a K to an F, but we're not, we're not adding this and practicing. Um, so
Fair enough, fair enough. Okay, I'm just, I'm just trying to keep track of everything.
We're reducing the single fam-, we're reducing the single-family buildings from 34 units to 28 units overall. To those fewer single-family units.
This is Zach McBride. Uh, sorry, I'm late to the meeting. Um, and just to follow up on Todd's uh question, um what other uh unit is affordable that looks like the one that you're proposing now, the K unit?
So it would be six So it would be six, six and seven, and four D.
Those are the affordable units that are reminiscent of this unit that you're proposing?
The gables, Trevor.
No, the, now, I'm trying to, I'm being confused by, are we talking about, are we comparing affordable with market, or are we comparing style with style?
So, so the, the guidance and, and the, and the law is that it needs to be in, the, the affordable units are indistinguishable from the outside, not architecturally similar, indistinguishable. You can't tell which one's the affordable unit, that's the law. So can you explain what other affordable units that exist or are planned that are indistinguishable from the one you're proposing?
I, I, Peter, I'll let you answer that, because I don't think, I don't think I can make a fourteen hundred square foot affordable, indistinguishable from a three thousand foot market.
You could make, you could make two units in that building, I guess, but it has to be indistinguishable from the outside, so.
Again, I, I think the difference in viewpoint is that, and, and, you know, I've done many of these projects, and it's the way I explain it, and it's been generally accepted, is it doesn't mean that the actual style has to be exactly the same. It means when you walk around the site, and you're going to be able to pick out affordable units, and that's a function both of what the style is and the location. I said earlier, you know, the more typical example of where they should be considered not indistinguishable is when they're concentrated in one area. But these are all spread out. So the factors that we've basically been citing on our side, and I won't take time to repeat them, but that shows that you're not going to be able to distinguish walking around. What I said as to the new K building, from memory, and Trevor, correct me if I'm wrong, but when you pulled up the, the duplex, which has, again, another factor, I respectfully say in our favor, is that the duplexes, there are many market units in duplexes as well as the affordable. That's what I'm saying is reminiscent, and Trevor, if my memory is wrong, but if you want to pull up the
Yes.
So here we're seeing the buildings six and seven, which are affordable units.
Correct. So, you know, and I, you know, I've been involved with historic districts and what have you, and so the elements of, 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 of facades and roof pitch and gables, that to me, and, and I'm certainly not saying that they're exactly the same, obviously they're not, but in terms of the same character, the same, the same types of elements, including the gable part of the facades, that's why I say that you're really not going to be able to distinguish walking around. It doesn't mean that you're not going to see differences. But I, I know from vast experience in dealing with the agencies, the subsidizing agencies and Housing Appeals Committee, that ident, identical is not the standard.
So identical is different than indistinguishable. And at least when I was in law school, and I took land use law from Mark Bobrowski, who wrote the Handbook of Massachusetts Land Use Law.
And he was a good friend.
What the, the standard that you are articulating is not the standard that I learned, so that's news to me. And I don't think that that's my interpretation of the law. And so unless you, you, I'm more than, of course, I do have an open mind, and I can be wrong. So if you have a particular case that suggests, that supports your contention, that it doesn't have to be indistinguishable, not identical, but indistinguishable, then, you know, then please share it, but I think that my, my perspective is that you're proposing something that does not meet 40B. So I, I think this is a substantial change, and I think that this requires, you know, further hearing.
Well, I'm not sure I follow completely, because I, I'm not saying that the standard is not being indistinguishable, but what you seem to be saying is that there, you know, there are no affordable units, they're identical, that are identical to these new proposed types. I, I don't think that's the right standard, and as Ted said a couple of minutes ago, you know, these, these buildings are, are new types replacing other types that were of single family, that also weren't identical in appearance to the approved affordable units approved by the board in the past, and also by Mass Housing. So.
Now, what the board has done in the past, I mean, this project predates all of us, so.
Understood, understood.
You know, I, I don't know what the board, what the rationale in the past was, but I know my understanding, and I will, you know, familiarize myself more, but I think my position, and I would most probably move to vote, that this does constitute a substantial change, and it requires, you know, a further review, so I think that's, that's my position. And I think that, that's where we, that, that's where, of course, there's two other members on the board that could overrule me today, but that's, that's my position, so.
Could I just share one more thing as, as an illustration? Here we are seeing a side by side of an affordable unit and a market unit that are combined into one duplex, which does exist, as an illustration of this, the stylistic identicality of the, the two, the two types of units, and would argue that, at the very least, to, to Peter's point, as you walk around the development, there is not a, and, and I'm not a lawyer, so please forgive me if I'm speaking inaccurately here, it does not convey a sense of differentiation that, which seems to be within the, the spirit of, of the 40B law.
So, this unit on the left, which, which is the affordable unit, I assume it's the one on the left?
Correct.
And you're, and there's, how many of these examples exist? And this, I guess, how many examples of this single structure exist?
Just, there was one of those that, at building four, that, building four and five, that was one of the first three buildings we built, we built three.
So there's only one building that really looks like this, where you have?
They're, they're all, you know, I would say to you, the buildings are all, you know, the building, none of the buildings are identical, they all have some small differences, but they all speak from the same vernacular that you see here, which is, you know, one, you know, kind of once, you know, a one story roof line starting with a, with a, with a typically six and twelve or eight and twelve pitch up to a ridge. And we have, we have two duplexes put together, we, we have two affordables put together as a building mass, we have two market rate units put together as a duplex building mass. Here we have one market and one affordable.
And the reason, and, and again, not a lawyer, so apologize if, if I'm speaking out of turn here. The reason I thought that that was sort of illustrative for, for the purposes of this conversation is that, you know, to, to, you know, I think the standard that Peter used is, when you walk around, it does not feel as though you can make any sort of determination, you know, easily sort of in the, in the spirit of the development. Oh, that, that unit is affordable, that one is a market rate unit. You might say, oh, that one's a bit larger, that one's a bit smaller, but that's the case. That, that distinction also exists between market rate units.
Affordable unit that's larger in a duplex, that's on the larger, that's on the larger half? So, yeah, do you have any affordable units that's on the, you know, that, what you just showed me clearly was not fifty fifty. That was a sixty forty split in terms of relative square footage from the front, so is there any affordable units that are on the sixty percent of those splits?
No, because we don't have.
So, so, so just to let you know, from my opinion, that, that was an error of the board to approve that. So I, I, I don't agree that that's appropriate, frankly. And it's obvious that all of the affordable units are the, on the smaller side, on the smaller of the proportion of the division, so you know, what's done is done, but I'm not going to, I, I, I'm not in favor of compounding a problem, so. I, I'm going to, I'm going to motion to vote, since we are at the top of the hour, that this constitutes a substantial change. Do I have a second for that vote?
Yes, I second.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, before you vote, and I.
I'm sorry, we're at the top of the hour, you, there's going to be plenty of time to address this further, but this is, this is. Excuse me, I am the chair, and I am speaking, thank you very much. We are voting, you will have an opportunity. How do you vote by rule, Mr. Fitch?
I vote to approve your motion.
That this is a substantial change, thank you, Mr. Labby.
Aye.
McBride, aye, this, a motion that the, the proposed change is constituted a substantial change. I believe we need to have a hearing in thirty days, is that correct, Jean?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
And first I apologize, I did interrupt, and I apologize. I, I was just trying to be flexible and see if you would consider putting off this determination. If we have to go to a public hearing, so be it, but if we could, you know, take time, my client and I, after this meeting, see what we can do and come back to you at this more informal, you know, open meeting, rather than going right to a public hearing, and Ted, I don't know if that would satisfy you, but that's the only reason I was speaking up.
I'm happy to follow your lead, Peter.
So.
I think we should set the public hearing as far out as we can to protect everyone's rights. I'm not sure if we, I'm not sure if I have the authority to essentially extend that time period, so I think we should schedule it, and then if we need to take it off the books, that's fine. But I think we should probably schedule it.
Okay, I understand, and it, and it sounds like, though, that we could have another meeting, which would have to be just forty eight hours' notice and put in your, your agenda, if there's something available between now and thirty days out, that you're willing to talk with us again if we have something else to propose.
Absolutely, I think.
We need more than forty eight hours.
Yeah, we're going to need some time, so I.
Oh, no, I just meant that's the notice period, we would.
Yeah, the notice period, so I, I would say, I wish I was better on my procedure on this, so I, I do think we should schedule the meeting, open a hearing within thirty days from today, so November, we should probably just pick a time, an evening meeting. You know, and then if, if we need to take it off the books, or you're going to have another proposal, that's fine, I just want to make sure that we all have it on the books.
Understood.
So, why don't we open a hearing? We don't have to conclude within thirty days, correct? We just have to open it within thirty?
Correct.
And then we can agree to continue, we can have multiple hearings if needed, if need be, correct, is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
So. Are folks available? Sorry, I'm getting my calendar here. About the eighteenth at seven PM. November eighteenth at seven PM.
Okay, that's doable for me.
And that works for me also.
I can do that, Mr. Chair.
Wonderful. If you have alternate proposals to present, then, then that's great, we'll entertain it, but otherwise, I think we will, we'll plan to see you then, so. Do we have to, there's no motion, right? We're just going to set the hearing date, is that correct? We don't have to move to, to set the date, we just set the date, is that correct?
I, I, since you're out here, you might as well just move to.
Yeah, so I would move to open the hearing regarding the substantial change to the comprehensive permit to, what did I say, the?
Eighteenth.
Eighteenth at seven PM. Do I have a second?
Yes, I second that.
Vote by role, Mr. Fitch.
Aye.
Mr. Labby.
Aye.
McBride, aye. We'll, so this meeting is set for the eighteenth at seven PM, a motion to adjourn. Have a second?
Second, we'll adjourn.
Uh, Fitch?
Aye.
Labby?
Aye.
McBride, aye, thank you very much, everyone, sorry I was late today.
Thank you.
Thank you.